First, I'd like everybody to rise and pledge allegiance to the Black people. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your beloved, for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with thy reprieve and justice for all. Thank you very much. I want to thank you here. Thank you for being here this morning. Uh, my name... Can you hear me? Want the microphone?
Yeah.
Good. Okay. Apparently, this is good news. Um, my name is Mike Pilkowski. I'm your current town moderator. Uh, what we're gonna do is, uh, next thing I'd like to do in order here is take a moment of silence for our families, friends, neighbors, and particularly our men and women who roam overseas, giving us the right to do what we do and exercise, uh, our opportunity to govern government as we sit here today. If you could please have a moment of silence. Alright, thank you very much. Now I'm gonna go on to the, uh... Set this thing up here. Okay. Now I'm gonna announce the results of the elections. Oh, one more thing before we get into that. I wanna make sure that all registered voters check in for the supervisors and that you have a voter card if needed. We will be conducting a voice vote, but if it comes that I can't tell the difference from yea or nay, we will ask for you to hold those cards up and we'll physically count you. Also, at this point in time, I'd like any non-registered voter, please raise their hand so that we can be recognized around the room. Looks like we have five, maybe six, seven... Okay. Thank you very much. Eight. And at the end of the meeting, after I do these elec... uh, election results, at the end of the meeting, Celine, I'd ask everybody who actually ran for office and was successful to, uh, stick around because Celine, our deputy tax collector, will swear you into office. Alright, for election results, for selectmen, three-year term, Lenny Espy, 189 votes, Tim Eldridge, 158. Lenny Espy will be our new selectman. Moderator for one-two-year term, we have Susan Slack with 89 votes. The trustee of the trust funds, one-three-year term, Carol Fister with 290 votes. For the trustee of the library, a one-year term, Anita Spencer with 196 votes. The trustee of the library, there's two positions here. Uh, Johanna Vinanu has 320 votes and Dennis Vinanu, which I don't have a count, but he's checked off on my list, so there's a write-in. The planning board, we had two positions. Uh, we had Tim Murphy at 140 votes, Johanna Bull, 171 votes, and Gary Jewell, 218 votes. So, both Johanna and Gary carry forward. For budget committee, we had two positions available for a three-year term. Melissa Siemens, 151 votes, Paul Bardowitz, 182 votes, Linda Edwards, 126 votes, and Bill Pykup with 146 votes. So, both Melissa and Paul will carry forward for the three-year term. For the zoning board of adjustment, we're looking for, uh, two-three-year terms. We only had one position as a, uh, sign-in, and it was Tom Hart for 270 votes. Supervisor of the checklist, uh, we have Juan... Dennis is a six-year term, by the way. Carol Fister had her name in, and she got 299 votes. Now I'm gonna go on to the, uh, planning board questions. Article two carried with 208 votes against 200... 127 votes. Article three carried with 216 votes versus 123 votes. Article four carried by 227 votes to 107. Article five carried with 252 votes to 87. Article six carried with 257 votes to 77 votes. And article seven carried with 257 votes and 81 no votes. Which reminds me, I appreciate you. If you can turn your cellphones off at this point in time, that would be kinda handy. Thank you very much. Alright, next what we're gonna do is introduce, uh, the board members up front, very end of the table. We have Claudia Lamp here, that's our town administrator. To her right, Lawrence Edwards, selectman. To his right, Tim Eldridge, um, current selectman. And then Henry Spencer, also selectman. At the end of the table, Paul Bardowitz, and not Paul Potter, last year, as budget committee chairman. I'd also like to recognize Celine Bergeron, our assistant town clerk and tax collector, and Deanna Amaral, our town clerk and tax collector. I wanna mention one thing about, we have these election results, that, uh, you know, I saw most of your faces coming in and voting, and I wanna recognize everybody that, uh, that works these elections. It's a long day. For me, it's a 14-hour day. Celine and Deanna have still another, oh, half a day beyond that to compile results to the state. And also let me thank all the supervisors of the checklist, all the folks that came in to count, the PTO for getting us food, and the board of selectmen for taking the term because the law states that we have to have two selectors present all day long. So, it's not just a cakewalk for us. There's a lot of work goes into this. I wanna thank everybody for that. At this point, I also'd like, uh, Tim Eldridge would like to recognize a few people, so I'm gonna give him the floor, and then we'll move on to rules, and then we'll get this meeting underway.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, on behalf of the board of selectmen, we'd like to recognize a few people. Um, the first, uh, couple people, if they could stand up, Karen Payne, Carol Fister, and Theresa Swanick, if you folks could stand up. These people, um, have worked tirelessly over the past year, um, and inadvertently, we forgot to mention them in our town report, with the, the dedicated work that they have done with the trustees, um, well, they're the trustees of the trust funds, but working on straightening out the trust funds. They have worked hours and hours for a whole year, um, trying to get this straightened out. So, please, give them a big round of applause. Next, uh, we've got a couple people that will be leaving office, and, um, we'd certainly, we're certainly at a loss, uh, with, with both of these people leaving. Um, the first person, uh, moved here in 1973. Uh, she has served on the planning board, um, as a tax collector, town auditor, historic society, and many, many other boards, um, and, and most currently, uh, the supervisor of the checklist from 1997 to 2016. Um, so Sheila Jones. Sheila? Also, um, to go along with that, um, some may notice that during the elections, Sheila's cause always here, and she always has the same chair. Uh, that chair that's sitting over there, uh, we're actually gonna give to Sheila because that goes with her wherever she's doing her supervisor of the checklist stuff.
She wants it now.
I can't handle it, Rob.
It's a very comfortable chair.
Here you go, Sheila. You can have it now.
Thank you, Lawrence. Alright, the next person that I'd like to recognize, um, again, uh, he moved here in 1979. He raised a family here in Effingham, um, has been a huge supporter and an advocate for the town of Effingham. Um, he has served on the budget committee since 1996 to president, still serving, and he was appointed as your moderator in 2012. Like to recognize him.
I know you all would like me to see you hug him, but I ain't gonna do it. Totally surprised. Thank you very much. Uh, you folks have been very kind to me. No, it says Lyle Thurston's name. He hates me, so it stays. Okay, well, thank you very much. Okay, now the rules. We're getting down to nitty-gritty. So, bear with me. There's a little bit to cover here. It may seem laborious, but it's important. So, moderator's rules for the town of Effingham. By majority vote, the voters can overrule any decision the moderator makes and any rule that the moderator establishes. Voter can raise such a request by point of order. And just so you know, that, that doesn't need a second. That needs to be addressed at that point. Stops all debate. We address the point of order. Moderator will take all articles in the order they appear on the warrant unless a motion is made and seconded prior to reading the article. The unanimous vote by the body will decide if the article will be taken out of order. The moderator will consider each article as follows. The moderator will announce the article number and read the text of the article in its entirety. The moderator will entertain a motion on the article. The motion will require a second in order to discuss that article. Once the motion has been seconded, the moderator will recognize and make a motion to explain the article. The meeting will debate, uh, the article and then phone on that article. No one may speak unless he or she has the floor. No one may have the floor unless recognized by the moderator. The moderator will recognize speakers with their hand raised. And believe me, I'll try to keep track here. It's not easy, but I'll do my best. Each speaker must state their name once given the floor. And as you that were here last year can remember, nobody could hear each other, so we have the benefit of two microphones in either aisle. I'll ask you to come up to the microphone and speak, and we'll be sure that everybody can hear you, because that was challenged last year. Uh, even if the voter does not have the floor, a voter may speak to raise a point of order. So, just keep that in mind. Once that hand goes up, point of order, I have to recognize that. To challenge a moderator ruling or to overrule the moderator. All questions and comments should be addressed to the moderator. Moderator will choose to respond to the questions. Each speaker may only speak once until everyone has spoken. With the exception of initial presentations on articles, all speakers, people who have the floor, be limited to no more than three minutes. I'm also gonna ask you, get to the point. This is gonna be a long day. It's a 50 center outside. Sure, I'd rather be doing other things, but we wanna get through this. But get through this so everybody's comfortable and doesn't raise a hand and call a question. The moderator will allow only one motion, floor at a time. The exceptions to this rule is that a, that a voter may raise a point of order at any time if the voter has the floor, and the voter may make a motion to amend the pending motion or a motion to call the question. Moderator will not accept negative motions, which are motions that require a no vote to be in the affirmative. Articles may be amended by any voter as long as the original intent of the article has not changed. The motion and a second is a prompt discussion on the amendment. My preference would be, and it's less confusing if we could address one amendment at a time. But there are other times, people will amend an article, and somebody wants to amend that, and that's cumbersome for me to keep track of. Sometimes it's cumbersome for the body to understand, so we'll do our best to work through that if that comes up. Again, everybody's here, giving their time to voice their opinion. A motion to call the question limits debate and requires a two-thirds majority vote. If this motion stops, this motion stops all debate on that motion. However, the moderator shall have the right to refuse to recognize a motion to call the question if moderator's in the moderator's opinion, the voters have not yet had an adequate opportunity to discuss this issue. Non-voters may not speak at the meeting without the permission of the voters, and I will poll the House for a voice vote. If we are in the affirmative, that particular non-voter can speak, because you keep in control of that. If, and here's the big one, if any person behaves in a disorderly manner, and after notice from the moderator persists in such behavior, or shall in any way disturb the meeting, or willfully violate any rule of proceeding, the moderator may have a police officer or any legal voter of the town remove such person from the meeting. And this is backed up by State Statute, RSA 40:8. So, don't make my day, please. The vote will be taken by simple voice vote, with an "aye" being in favor and "no" against. In the event that a simple voice vote is not clearly determined, the outcome of the vote, the body will be asked to raise the voter, voter cards, have all been given, registered voters, hand it up prior to the start of the meeting for a counted show of cards. In addition, I want you to listen to this one. In addition, any five voters may request to vote on any article be by secret ballot. This request will be in writing and will be on a secret ballot request form obtained from Moi. To do so, all five voters must be present and shall sign the request form and will be identified by the moderator upon inquiry from any voter. The request must be presented to the moderator prior to the end of debate on the article. So, that means prior to any voice vote. And I do have those forms here, and I allow, if people wanna give it to me ahead of time and feel it's necessary, please do so. After the completion of discussion, vote on any article or question. The meeting may then vote to restrict reconsideration prior voter article. If the vote is to restrict reconsideration passes, the voter-warrant article that is subject to the restriction is, until final adjournment of the meeting, protected from any further consideration. If later in the meeting there is a motion to reconsider the restricted vote or an article and it passes, actual reconsideration cannot take place until an adjourned session held at least seven days later. So, if you decide to do that, you better plan on coming back. The moderator's general rules are a procedure, a guideline to keep the meeting moving and minimize disruption. The rules may be modified by the moderator to suit the meeting and once again, can be overruled by the meeting. Told you it was laborious. Now, we're gonna go on... To the warrant. I'll just need to find him. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,680 to contract the services of Avatar Associates of New England Incorporated for the year 2016. This sum represents payment for the first year of five-year level funded contract that provides a full update of property values to market rate in 2020 as required by RSA 75:8-A, as well as general assessing services throughout the, each of the five years, and field data verification of information appearing on property tax cards. This requires a majority vote. The selectmen and budget committee recommend this appropriation.
Make a motion.
Moved by Tim Eldridge, seconded by Henry Spencer. We are now ready to discuss article eight. We do have somebody that would like to address article eight?
A very tall person. Um...
Name?
Melissa Siemens, Henry Drive.
Uh, what?
What? Oh, Henry Drive. I don't live there anymore. I live in a different neighborhood, but it's the same town.
As Melissa Siemens, we're good.
A little nervous. Let's get this thing rolling.
Yeah, there you go.
Mr. Moderator, first, I'd like to thank you for your distinguished service, for being a moderate moderator. Um, but I would also like to offer an amendment to article eight. Should I read the amendment?
Yeah.
I would like to change the wording in the first portion of the article to read, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,680 for contracted services, for contracted assessing services for the year 2016. Further, to require the board of selectmen to award such contract through a competitive bid process. The rest of the article would remain the same with my amendment.
So, what we have is, the only discussion at this point is to amend this article to state, and I would ask you to hand me that so I can read that back, if you would please, but I have no second.
I'll second that.
Seconded by...
John Vertoglu.
So, we have a motion to second, which will amend article eight. And I'm gonna read this amendment. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,680 for contracted assessing services for the year 2016. Further, to require the board of selectmen to award such contract through competitive bid process. The sum represents payment for the first year of a five-year level funded contract that provides a full update of property values to market rate 2020 as required by RSA 75:8-A, as well as general assessing services through each of the five years and field data verification of information appearing on property tax cards. This requires a majority vote. Now, we have any further discussion on this? Yes. Oh, absolutely. Tim Eldridge?
Can you guys give?
No. How about them? Alright. Just get reference to that amendment. Um, we have currently, yes, this is year number one, but we actually signed a five-year contract this past fall. So, I'm not sure what legal ramifications trying to now, um, get a different company.
I would agree. Okay, question in the back. Come to the microphone, please.
Virginia Raven, Hutter's Bridge Road, also known as Slum Creek. Um, if we can't do anything for five years, maybe we could write it so that after the five years, it would go up for a competitive bid. It would suggest a sealed competitive bid to keep it fair. I work in this town. I'm a realtor here, and Avatar Atlanta doesn't know what they're doing. They, some houses are under assessed, some houses are over assessed. They came into my house. I have a, um, I live in a little post in Bean, and I have a cathedral ceiling, and you can obviously see when he was in there, that the wood on the ceiling was just the wood that covered the roof. And he looked at me, says, "What's over that?" "It's my roof. You are outside. You look. My roof." So, I really don't think that everybody they have is quite aware of the situations in each individual house. So, yeah, I would go for that, but I would say, you know, after the five years is up, to avoid legal ramifications, do a sealed bid.
I, I just wanted to clarify that, um, the purpose of the amendment that I made was not to discuss the merits of any specific contractor. Um, it was only to point to the fact that last year at town meeting, we increased the amount that is required to go out to bid, but that this still falls within that, and I feel like, for a fair process across the board, all contracts or anything exceeding $15,000 should go out to bid in Effingham, and over a five-year period, this contract will amount to $128,400, and that seems, in the future, that it could go out to bid. But understanding the position that we're in, I would be willing to withdraw my amendment.
The seconder has to withdraw this?
Does the seconder have to withdraw, or how does that... Point of order?
Good question. Can I answer it?
Yes.
Probably not. I'll bum line.
Okay.
But, we can just, I, I, I s... My last year went down, you know? So, I guess what I would do. Go ahead. Get somebody wants to sponsor. We gotta come to the microphone, though. This, this, uh, little bit of exercise today.
Newly built house on, uh, Big Mountain Road. Uh, one question, uh, I'd be glad to withdraw my second if she wishes, but one question I would have is, why even have the article in the paper? If you've already made the commitment, the vote is obsolete. We cannot re... Even if we voted down, you're still gonna pay them. So, why are they making decisions before the town even voted for it?
Well, let me speak to that as, as moderator. The warrant article, if we have a contract, you know, what she did was eliminate the line of Avatar Associates. But what could be done is that you could still leave the line in there to further require the town in the future to go out to competitive bid. Is it legal and binding? No. It's advisory. And we're gonna find that out probably in a couple articles today, is that what the selectmen's job is, is their job. But what your job is, is to let them know how you feel. But by doing so, it's the will of the town and its advisory. You're the legislative body. They have certain parameters they have to stay within to run the town. But advice from the public is always good, and this is the forum to do that in.
Well, how many other people feel as well, and I feel as well, that Avatar doesn't do any justice for the town. Uh, they might try to give the town more money in taxes, which are needed at times, but, uh, like she had brought up the point that they're not consistent, they're not fair with the market then, or I don't know what they are.
Okay, well, this body cannot, cannot dictate contractual obligations whatsoever. That decision has been made. But, if, it's up to you folks how you wanna do this.
That's all I have to say.
So, we actually have a motion to amend this article, and it's been withdrawn and seconded. So, now we're back to the, now we are back to the main article. But you all know that there's a five-year contract in effect, so don't forget it, because in future years, that may be what the town wants to do. And I'm sure, just from this discussion, next board may consider that, or future boards can consider that. So, having the motion made and, and seconded to remove that amendment, we're going back to the main article. Do we have any discussion on the main article?
If I can just point out a... Give me a hint. Just a couple things. Back in 2002, um, we had, um, Nyberg and Turvis, some of you may have remembered, um, that just, kinda what you're talking about as far as the, the skews on the, um, the assessing was kind of all over the place. Um, certainly, there's a process in place if you're not familiar, or if you don't like what, what your assessment is. Uh, but as far as what the board is seeing on, on their performance, um, at this point, we were pleased. Um, and again, since, um, in 2002 is when the first article went in for the funding for, um, the software to go through Avatar, and then, uh, full funding actually took place in 2004. So, we've had Avatar since 2004, um, assisting the town with, um, the assessing. Um, and I would say at this point, um, we, the board, um, felt no urgency to, to change numbers, just because of, um, you know, there, there hasn't been a huge, um, concern with the numbers that they put forward, um, through the assessing, plus the, uh, the office is using the software, um, so it's compatible with everything that they're doing. Um, so that's the reasoning behind us just entering into that particular contract.
Any further comment or question? Go right ahead.
So, now we're voting on the, the main article and appropriating the first year's payment. Um, last year at town meeting, we appropriated, uh, for the final year of the previous contract, $25,804. But when I look at the budget versus actual, it says assessing contract that we spent in 2015, $69,790. So, I was just looking for clarification on that difference.
Yeah, basically, the way that this works is, we put that amount in each year of the, the five years. Um, so, motion is, we don't spend that full amount, so that money gets carried over. So, and, and the fifth year, when we do our reevaluation, um, there's a larger amount of money in, that we can pull from, because during the, the total town reevaluation, um, it does cost more. Basically, we're paying these people on an hourly base. We're projecting what, what it's gonna cost us, um, you know, throughout the five years. So, that's why, um, you'll see on year number five, there was a over expenditure there, uh, but that was somewhat anticipated because we've, um, built the money up over the years so that it wouldn't be a huge amount that we needed to appropriate on, on year number five.
So, are you saying cumulatively, we didn't overspend the five-year amount?
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Having none, I'm now gonna read article eight in its entirety, and we will then vote on article eight. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,680 to contract services of Avatar Associates of New England Incorporated for the first, for the, for the year 2016. This sum represents payment for the first year of a five-year level funded contract that provides a full update of property values to market rate... to market rate in 2020 as required by RSA 75 Poland-A. As well as general assessing services throughout each of the five years and field data verification of information appearing on property tax cards. This requires a majority vote. The Selectment and Budget Committee recommend this appropriation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? The ayes have it. Article 8 carries. Article 9. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 for road reconstruction. This requires a majority vote. The Selectment and Budget Committee recommend this appropriation. Moved by Lawrence Edwards. Seconded by Tim Eldridge. We can now discuss Article 9. Mike Hallow.
Hi, Mike Hallow here. At Budget Committee hearing, this money was targeted, as I was told, for the Granite Road reconstruction. Is that still correct?
Yeah.
Last year's Warren article is for $46,000. I was under the impression that was going to complete that process of reconstruction. So we're a bit over budget at this point. Is there any chance that some of this $15,000 won't be needed to finish this project?
I don't believe so. We have six cohorts we have. So this is the cohort that is the additional rather that we need to install a cohort. And would you say the 46, that didn't completely manage, or this is only a section?
Okay. I was, I thought it was a project set aside for $46,000, and this money was going to that initial plan. But you're saying there's something that's strong beyond that plan?
This is the thing is we would upgrade the map. Do we still have a section of, do we still need to do?
Well, I'd like to make an amendment to the language in the article, if I may make a motion. And that is to just put at the very end of that article, on Granite Road, so that any monies that can be funded for reconstruction under this article would be targeted specifically to Granite Road. And if there's any leftover monies, they can go back to the coffers.
I'm going to jump in on that. In order to do that, this would have had to be a special Warren article. The special Warren article designates any funds specifically for that purpose that cannot be used anywhere else. And for those of you who've been around a long time, years ago, we used to do that with road paving and road reconstruction. But we deleted because it allowed some flexibility within budgets.
Thank you for that update.
Just, just, just so you know, that's how it works. So the budgeting process, you know, that's something at a public hearing or in the budget meetings to be discussed.
Great, thanks, Mike.
You're welcome. Now, Vicki Kirkwood said she had a little trouble here. And so when you speak lines, you speak a little louder. Thank you very much. Any further discussion on Article 9? Hearing any, seeing any, we'll now read it to vote on Article 9. We'll now read the article. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 for road reconstruction. This requires a majority vote. The Selectment and the Budget Committee recommend this appropriation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Article 9 carries. Article 10. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 for a road resurfacing and repair. This requires a majority vote. The Selectment and Budget Committee recommend this appropriation. Moved by Henry Spencer. Seconded by Tim Eldridge. We are now ready to discuss Article 10. Comments?
Jim DeGare, just simply like to ask, is there any specific target for this $15,000?
Yeah, the primary purpose of solace this year is going to be for crack sealing. The primary targets that we have in that case are the...
Just pull our...
The primary roads we're looking at are loose pavement roads. Last year was the first year that we had successful crack sealing. And I will admit that the road I'm most familiar with is Old Town Road, which had some pretty bad cracking on it. And looking at it this, how it would survive through this winter.
Yeah, just pull it closer to you now.
How it survives through this winter. I do look at the money as worthwhile to spend because it does increase the longevity that it gives out of the road. But this, this money is specifically for crack sealing, Mr. DeGare.
I would just like to point out that if you take a ride down Pine River Road, you need to take your drama before you hit it.
Tis the season. Any further discussion on Article 10? Hearing done, seeing none. Well, I'll read Article 10 when we're ready to vote. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 for paved road resurfacing and repair. This requires a majority vote. The Selectment and Budget Committee recommend this appropriation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Article 10 carries. Article 11. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $143,830 for payments to the following capital reserve accounts previously established. And I will read these accounts. Aquatic invasive plants, $6,830. Fire truck equipment, $20,000. Police cruiser equipment, $15,000. Town-owned bridges, $100,000. And transfer station recycling center, $2,000. This is a special Warren article. This requires a majority vote. The Selectment and Budget Committee recommend this appropriation. Make a motion to move the article. Article moved by Tim Eldridge. Seconded by Henry Spencer. We are now ready to discuss Article 11.
Irene Riden. I make a motion that we reduce the fire truck equipment figure to $5,000, and the police cruiser equipment to $5,000. My reasoning is this. We have a lot in both of those funds. We should move that $25,000 down to the town-owned bridge fund, which is really our big priority right now. So that's what I want to do.
Second. It was seconded by Chris Siemens. A motion is second to reduce the amount of the money in the fire truck?
To five.
To?
Five.
$5,000. And cruiser fund?
$5,000.
To $5,000. A motion is second. We have discussion. Anybody want to discuss this?
And increase, and I want to increase town-owned bridges to $125,000.
We have a second. So discussion.
The fire truck equipment capital reserve fund does indicate that we have $244,527 in that account. However, there was not the payment of the new truck.
I know that.
So that will bring that down to...
The truck, what, $30,000?
Approximately about $30,000 only in that account.
I know that.
And you know what the price of, the truck that's being replaced by the insurance company is a $350,000 truck.
But we now have a big truck and a little truck. So one year won't make a difference.
We, as a budget committee, we felt that we have to keep... We've never not had this handled with the town-owned bridges. We can't bear hearing heads and seeing them with everything and reduce them. I've been an advocate trying to put it up on the side in every account so that when we come up to have to replace that piece of equipment or replace that bridge, we're not taking a big bubble. And that's why the budget committee did recommend the $1,000 for the fire truck.
Okay, have now been recognized as gentlemen here.
Jim DeGare, I would just like to ask, how old was the engine that's being replaced by the insurance company?
I believe it was 20 years, Irene. It was a 1996.
When was that due to be replaced?
It would have been due to, well, it was being replaced with the mini pumper that we currently get. And they were going to try to keep that service as long as they could.
So basically, we've already got a new engine.
We have a second large engine that's in rotation.
So I would be okay with reducing the capital reserve fund for the fire engine because we've just got one, or we got two.
And the police cruiser will have $50,000.
Take turns.
Yeah.
Okay, further discussion? Go ahead. Microphone. Irene, we're going to, everybody's going to take a turn here. That's what I said at the beginning.
From what I just...
Nora King, please.
Betty, sorry.
Betty.
Betty Brown, sorry. From what I just heard, in my understanding, we are already committed to the new truck before this replacement of the second truck, where the money has already committed us to pay for that truck that is coming to us. And it's like saying, my light bill's coming in, and I don't feel like paying it. Am I correct? Is that what's being said here?
Please do.
Hello? All right. Just the on position. Basically, that $244,000, the check has been written now. So the truck is fully paid for. So there's no doubt that, you know, we need additional money in there. The check has been written, the truck is actually here. As far as putting in the additional money, we're just trying to stack that savings account in for future purchase down the road. That's all.
Okay. I'd like to also add that the more you reduce of the police and the fire department, it impacts every last human being that lives in this town for the fire and police safety for us for things that are material things, like bridges.
Right ahead, Jim.
If I can just speak on the police cruiser. Again, it's just that savings account so that the town doesn't get hit with a big bill in the end. Basically, we're on year number four of five for the replacement of the taco. So next year, not this year that we're in now, but the following year, we'll be looking to replace that. Yes, there is funds in there, but coming up, because we're currently in year number two of the other vehicle, we need to build the funds for that. So again, it's your choice, but right now, we will.
Let's start up back here. And then I'll give it to you, Irene.
Brent Rogers. Just for clarification, we all understand, I believe we just received a new truck that's sitting out front. It's a small pumper. The one that was crashed, and the insurance company's going to pay to replace that truck. That's what I guess, I'm not sure. If they're going to pay to replace that truck, that means, I know it takes a while to get one built abroad, but that means we're going to have two brand-new trucks very shortly. Is that what I'm understanding?
That is correct.
Okay, so that might help people understand the fine what level we need to keep in it. We're basically going to have two brand-new trucks, and then you still got the tanker down there, which isn't that old.
Thanks, Brent. Eric, you're next. Well, Irene spoke, so we kind of all through the motions here.
Eric Jones. Just to do some simple math, yes, we will have two new trucks very shortly. However, one of those trucks we just bought cost approximately $225,000. The other one that we are getting a replacement of, the estimate, whatever they were looking at, funding it in a couple of years, was about $400,000. That's $625,000. At $20,000 a year for 20 years, which is about the life of those trucks, as I understand it, we still don't have enough money. Which means 20 years down the road, we still get hit with a big bill the year that we have to replace those trucks. And because we now have two trucks that are essentially going to be on the same cycle, you're going to be replacing two trucks at approximately the same time. You could potentially have a year where you have a $250,000 bill for a truck, and then another year right after it with a $250,000 bill for a truck. The problem to me with reducing these figures is we reduce it this year, but we say, but we'll bump it up next year. And then we don't. And then we don't. And then we don't. And then we don't. And then we get 15 years into the 20 years, and we realize we have absolutely nowhere near the amount of money we need. And then when they come to us and we say, we need $500,000 in the capital reserve fund for fire trucks to replace the truck, and we have $100,000, and everybody freaks out because what that will do to your taxes will really make you choke. If we do $20,000 a year for 20 years, we at least get much closer to the figure that we need. We have got to stop pushing stuff down the road. Pushing stuff down the road got us into the position we're in with the bridges. We've got to stop doing it with everything else.
My point is that we need to have the bridges fixed. The more we can put away now... He's right, it's because we had not done anything in the past. But the more we put away now, the better off we'll be. The fire truck, first of all, we're not going to be making a vote in 20 years. Secondly...
Boy, you'll take it, Irene. I feel so much better now.
$5,000 onto the police car gives us 15. Next year, 15 will be 65, then it'll be, it'll be 80, then it'll be 95, and it'll be 110. And that's in a four-year period. So I don't see an issue with the police cruiser at all. We'll have enough money for two of them. But I think we really need to concentrate on the bridges and get them going. Granite Road is not going to be an experience for many.
Okay, we have another question coming up from the back here. Remember, we are discussing the amendment, and at the end of this, we will vote on these amended numbers before, and then see how it relates to the original article.
John Eisner. I'd like to just, now we're talking about fire truck. I'd like the fire department to stand up and say why we should put this stuff away. Stand up for the department.
If they're so willing so, willing to do so.
Randy Burbank, my chief. I disagree with decreasing the fund at all because like people have been saying, it costs a good $300,000 now to replace a truck. What's it going to cost, you know, 20 years down the road from now? So right now, like Brent said, we do have a tanker. That should be the next one to be replaced. It's going to cost a lot more than the one replaced now because the bay absorbs more water. I just disagree with down, decreasing any figures at all for fire truck stages. Price of the district's going up and down.
Any further questions? Yes, I see you, Melissa.
I support Ms. Riden's amendment to this article. And I agree that we need to focus on the bridges. But I just also wanted to add a little piece that it, I believe it also speaks to the desperate need that we have at this point for a capital improvement plan that projects where we're going to be three, five, or when we're all gone, years from now.
Heck, people 20 years ago that were here didn't care about the bridge, so pretty obvious.
Well, they were fixing Hunter's Bridge, with all due respect.
True.
So I, given the fact that we have two pieces, new pieces of fire apparatus, I believe we have sufficient funds. Or if we need a little extra next year at town meeting, we can add two to purchase our new police cruiser. And then over the course of the next year, I sincerely hope that the powers that be work on a capital improvement plan so we can stretch this out and level fund it, our future needs. Thank you.
Betty Brown. I'd like to also add to what I had spoke of before. Like, everybody is seeing what is in front of them now. We've got these trucks, yes. The money is there for another truck. But we're not seeing the whole picture of the unseen things that could happen, that has already happened, that we got one of those trucks through. The unseen possibilities of an accident, even going to a scene, and having to come up with money of, oh my God, we gave it all to the bridge. and having to come up with money of, "Oh, my God, we gave it all to the bridge."
I'd like to have these folks tell us how much it is in appearance a new cruiser will cost us when it comes time to replace the Tahoe.
Good morning. Basically, I can't tell you the exact amount it's going to be for a new cruiser. What we're looking at is to replace the Tahoe with a vehicle that's similar to the one that we replaced the old Crown Vic with, which we afford. We were fortunate to get that because it happened to be extra on the law, so we got a pretty good deal on it. People have to understand, these vehicles are not, you know, your grocery getter. They're high-performance vehicles. They sit at idle for very long periods of time. It's absolutely critical that we have reliable vehicles, particularly with our weather conditions here. If I remember correctly, last year, this fund was raised to the current amount that it is because there was some concerns, you know, three years rotation, four years rotation down the road. This particular Tahoe wasn't replaced this year because there was an issue with its production. And we received it later. There was an issue, we've used the wrong vehicle or something like that. This was an undue call. We don't just pay for the cost of the vehicle. Depending on the vehicles and depending on what their configuration are, we need keyges in the vehicle, we need light systems, sirene systems. Sometimes they put like an enhanced electrical system. A lot of that does come in a police package, but some of the stuff they have to do at Ospey Mountain Electric or one of the other vendors aftermarket.
I believe the cost when we purchased this one, again, it was a leftover model, but I still think it was in the $40,000 range without the equipment that we put on. Is that correct? With the-
With the equipment, yes. Any further discussion on Article 11 as amended?
David Spencer. I'd like to point out that the apparatus, the fire apparatus, in any town, amongst other conditions, directly affects your homework insurance. All right? Insurance companies know what we have for apparatus. They know the rate of the fire department. They know the utility ratings, and it goes right into your pocket or out of your pocket every year, every year. Right? So the better the equipment, the lower your rates are. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Okay, we are now going to vote on the amendment to Article 11. And I'm going to read it. So this change is- We're still dealing with, okay, so see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $143,830 for payments to the following capital reserve accounts previously established. Aquatic invasive plants, $6,830. Fire truck and equipment fund, $5,000. Police cruiser and equipment, $5,000. Town-owned bridges, $125,000. Town recycling center, $2,000. Special warrant out, the majority vote. We are voting only on the article as amended. All who are in favor of the amendment to this article, say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed?
No.
That was rather resounding. Okay, so the amended vote on the art, the vote on the amended article fails. We are now going back to the main article as originally read. Do we have any further discussion on this Article 11 as written in this warrant? Seeing none, hearing none, we are now ready to vote on Article 11 as presented in the warrant. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $143,830 for payments to the following capital reserve accounts previously established. $6,830 for aquatic invasive plants. Fire truck and equipment, $20,000. Police cruiser and equipment, $15,000. Town-owned bridges, $100,000. Transfer station recycling center, $2,000. This is a special warrant article. This requires majority vote. The selectmen and the budget committee recommend this appropriation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed? The ayes have it. Article 11 carries. Article 12. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $30,500 for payments to the following trust fund accounts previously established. Police safety gear expendable trust fund, $3,500. Municipal auditing expendable trust fund, $1,000. Municipal buildings expendable trust fund, $21,000. Town hall restoration fund, $5,000. This is a special warrant article. This requires majority vote. Selectmen and budget committee recommend this appropriation. So moved by Tim Eldridge, seconded by Henry Spencer. We are now ready to discuss Article 12. Seeing none, hearing none, we are now ready to vote on Article 12. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $30,500 for payments to the following trust fund accounts previously established. Police safety gear expendable trust fund, $3,500. Municipal auditing expendable trust, $1,000. Municipal buildings expendable trust, $21,000. And town hall restoration trust fund, $5,000. This is a special warrant article. Warrant article. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed? Ayes have it. Article 12 carries. Article 13. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $1,000 from the undesignated fund balance to be added to the fire truck and capital equipment reserve fund previously established. The $1,000 was received from the towns of Parsons Field in 2015 for fire department mutual aid. This is a special warrant article. This requires a majority vote. The selectmen and budget committee recommend this appropriation. Moved by Henry Spencer, seconded by Tim Eldridge. We are now ready to discuss Article 13. Seeing none, hearing none, we are now ready to vote on Article 13. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $1,000 from the undesignated fund balance to be added to the fire truck and equipment capital reserve fund previously established. The $1,000 was received from the town of Parsons Field in 2015 for fire department mutual aid. This is a special warrant article. This requires a majority vote. Selectmen and budget committee recommend this appropriation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed? Article 13 carries. We have a motion to restrict reconsideration of Articles 8 through 13. Seconded by, we have a second by Tim Eldridge. Restriction, you remember what I said earlier about what restricting reconsideration does? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed? We have restrict reconsideration for Articles 8 through 13. Thank you. Article 14. See if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $260,000 to replace the bridge on Stevens Road and to further authorize a governing body to withdraw $150,000 from the undesignated fund balance for this purpose, with remaining $110,000 to be funded through taxation. This is a special warrant article. This requires a majority vote. The selectmen and the budget committee recommend this appropriation. Moved by Henry Spencer, seconded by Tim Eldridge. We are now ready to discuss Article 14.
Karen Payne. What's the plan for that bridge?
Put the microphone, of course, to Mark, please.
Okay. We have $260,000 appropriated, and we'd like to cut that back to $280,000. Make a motion.
So we have a question, is what the plan is. So we could address the question, and then you could make a motion. You would, please?
Meaning, what would the repair look, what's the plan? Meaning, what would the repair look like? What, does it evolve?
Okay. If it's a complete replacement of the old stone color on Stevens Road, we're going to replace it with a quick cast fox color, which will be can buy, no, not buy 10 bucks. And the amount of money that we got from, the price that we got from HEB was $260,000. But we think we can do this for less money, so I'd like to make the motion to cut the $260,000 and $210,000.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to reduce the $260,000 amount to $210,000. And we have this information by Lawrence Edwards. Seconded by somebody, hold on. Ready? Mike Barrows. No. Now we can discuss, we're going to discuss this amendment, so... All right, I'm going to, okay, let's discuss it.
How would the, you approach the breakdown coming out of capital reserve or other reserve fund balance and path ratio?
I would see it under the taxation of $150,000. Eight fifty-one, eight hundred and fifty for the undesigned aid fund.
So are you able to recite that to me? Or you want me to just go ahead and put it in? You're going to, you're going to want to reduce the overall to $210,000?
Yeah.
Which would, the remaining would be now $60,000.
$50,000 can come out of $150,000 if it's a way to taxation, and $850,000 in there, which comes out of undesigned aid fund.
Okay. We have a second. We have a, okay, I'm going to read this to you. We have, correct me if I'm wrong, please, I'm sure you will. The amended on the floor right now to discuss is to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of $210,000 to replace the bridge on Stevens Road and to further authorize a governing body to withdraw $150,000 from the undesignated fund balance for this purpose, with remaining $60,000 to be funded through taxation. This is a special warrant article. It requires a majority vote. Am I correct in that assumption, Lawrence? Am I right?
Yeah.
Okay. If we have any discussion on this amendment, we get hands all over the place. Let's start way in the back. You were first, and then we'll work up the front.
Good morning, Kathy Leeming. I just have a question.
Please come closer to the microphone, people do have trouble hearing.
Good morning.
Thank you.
You hear me now?
Yeah.
Kathy Leeming, is the name. And I just have a question. The article that we just, Article 11, says that we have a capital reserve for bridges of $103,000. Why doesn't the $60,000 remain there?
Basically, the, what our plan is, as far as funding the Stevens Road bridge, is as is explained here, we're taking it from the hundreds of fund balance and asking for taxation to fund the full replacement of that bridge. The money that was in the previous article would remain in there because we've got three other bridges that it's going to, well, two that need some major concern or major work sooner than later. And our plan is to continue to build that up because it will take a little bit to get there. And on the advice of the engineer that came in and assessed that bridges for us, we need to do some preliminary work on the remaining bridges that we're not currently fixing, such as Snow Road and Granite Road bridges. So the funds would actually come out of the previous article. So we're not looking to touch that to rebuild the Stevens Road bridge. That, those funds would be used just strictly to do the preliminary work, and the remaining balance would go forward as far as being able to replace those other bridges.
So there's a total of four bridges. Stevens Road is separate, and the other three are going to come out of the other.
Right, and that, those are just the brand new bridges to the state.
Thank you.
We had other hands up. One up, behind you, Mike, and then the last one.
Pamela Burbank. I'm just wondering if the $260,000 that you say we need already is, with reducing it, is it going to pay for the thing to be done totally? Or are you going to ask for more money next year?
Basically, the $260,000, we had to have a number to go forward with, to go to the budget committee. As you remember, last year, we had an engineering firm come in, give us an outrageous number. We all agreed that it was too high for us to go back to do the homework. The time is nearing that we had to come up with a number. The engineering firm that we were working with wasn't able to provide the number. So that's when we reached out to HEB, who is a firm out of Conway. And they actually provided that $260,000, which would, if we were building a bridge that every specification that the state is, has laid out, and if we were to, say, go through the state for a J fund, there's certain requirements that we would be required to do. That $260,000 actually resembles all that stuff. As far as going through all the loopholes and all that sort of stuff. So we knew going into it, yes, the $260,000 was high. Technically, we have had some numbers come forward as far as from our other engineering firm that has provided that we can actually do the bridge cheaper. We have not put it out yet, so the numbers at this point are not concrete. But we do believe that the $210,000 that we produce this to would be sufficient amount of funds to complete the bridge, total replacement and putting in that.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, and then Gary.
Hi, Mike, Ellen again. Holden Engineering last year had a price for us for $320,000. Now, they build bridges all over. Look at their website. They're pretty well-established. Again, HEB came in and they did, in about two weeks, assessed all of our bridges. And they came up with $260,000. They're another well-known, build bridges all over the place company. And in two weeks, I don't know that if they really dissected our project to the minutia. Stony Ridge is the company for the wetlands permanent they engage with. They've been in and they brought in another person who doesn't work for them separately, Mr. Bacon. On his website, I couldn't find anything. In fact, I tried calling him a couple of times to see what kind of experience he has in bridge building. If his designs have ever been implemented, built in the state. But there's no references to it. Nobody even, there's not even a place to leave a call back message. I have gotten all the material I could out of the town hall, put the prices together on this, and there was an estimation from Mr. Bacon on there. And it comes up roughly between $160,000 and $170,000, I believe. The only thing I can't find, haven't found or seen anywhere, is the labor cost in demo to remove the bridge and install a bridge. Two very prominent bridge-building companies seem to think $260,000 or above. I am concerned that we may not be putting enough money forward to this when it comes right down to it. What is the harm of leaving it at $260,000 and then maybe taking those funds next year and adding them to the bridge account that's already, we're trying to build up?
Certainly, that is a possible point that we read. The requested amount at $260,000, the money that is left over could be rolled in as funds going into the account, which would be decided at town meeting next year. But as far as the $210,000 number, part of what HEB had given us was, again, supplements. They gave us a block number to be able to complete- Um, they, they gave us a, a block number to be able to complete the entire project. Um, part of the project that we've already done on Stevens Road has been completed through Stony Ridge, through Bacon Engineering. Um, so I think with the, the reduced amount, I'm hoping that there would be enough.
Well, I guess that's my point, what's the ramifications if we come up short? How do we overcome that? Somebody else stated, we have to do this next year because of the money. So is it, again, is it, would it be the right thing to do to be safe? Make sure you have enough money, or to reduce it?
Mike, can you please move closer to the microphone?
I'd be concerned that if we reduce it, we'd have to be scrambling for funds. I just wanna make sure it's fully funded and we can complete this this year.
If we're to say, say we do end up running over the two ten, um, even though our intent is not to go with the, uh, capital reserve fund, there is the funds that have, will potentially be able to help us.
Gary, your hand is up next. Teresa, you were next. You had a hand up?
Are you agents to expand from the capital reserve fund for bridges? You are. Okay. So, uh, this wasn't seconded by one of the other selectmen, so I wasn't aware that you were all supportive of this. But is that what I'm hearing, that you've all thought this out and come up with this amendment?
As far as myself, uh, again, that two sixty number, um, as I explained, we, we had to have a number. Uh, so we reached out to the firm that assisted us.
Makes sense.
As, as, I just wanna point out for free, um, they helped us get these numbers. And, um, again, it goes back to the, the theory that, well, I guess we should be budgeting what we actually need. But, um, if, if the funds are left over, like I explained, the money, yes, they could be rolled into the, um, the capital reserve fund.
Or we could vote next year to put those into the capital reserve.
I'm not an engineer, um, I'm, I'm relying on what they tell me. I know Lawrence has, has done some homework as far as getting additional numbers. Um, it hasn't gone out of it.
I guess that's the confusion, I don't mean to interrupt, but it sounds like you did your homework, you hired, you didn't hire, you got, um, free consulting expertise, um, you had engineers come in, and you had two opinions that put it in the two sixty range to be safe. And it's not exactly clear why, why you feel strongly that we can do this for less.
You know, in reference to the, the second of that motion. Certainly, I, I support the, the two ten. I, I do think that would be, um, enough funds, uh, to, to move it forward. That's my personal opinion, again, I'm not an engineer.
Is there a professional opinion that it would be enough? No offense, an engineering opinion?
We've got two spectrums. One, the two sixty, and one, and one, one sixty, sixty-four. It sounds like there's some holes in that estimate, so.
Ah, but that's good to know. So holes in the lowest, and two firms supporting the higher estimate. Thank you.
Because of that, how we felt is a board, uh, granted, we started out at two sixty, but information brought to the table, a lot of information brought to the table, and I'm comfortable enough with two hundred and ten thousand dollars is the amount of money being raised and we can finish this project with that. Um, given the information that we have brought to the table, uh, mostly, uh, Slackman Edwards has done a lot of work on this. I feel fairly confident in the data that he showed me that we can get that done, but has caused the difference between the lowest bid and highest bid, this is the middle ground. I, I do admit that where I look at this is, it's tax money, and if I don't have to raise it this year from people's pockets, I don't believe it. So, and I do believe the two hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Uh, Susan Slack. Uh, just a clarification, Tim, when you're describing the two hundred and sixty thousand, you said that was doing all the, uh, state, I think you said state specifications. So if, if we don't, if we're not doing that, are we building a bridge that doesn't adhere to all the state specifications? And is it something that would be a, a lower quality bridge, something we'd have to replace sooner? Uh, what's the difference in the standard of bridge we'd be building with the two hundred and ten thousand?
Uh, basically, the, um, the lower amount would still give us a, a bridge that should last us many, many years. Uh, the, the only difference, um, as far as meeting the state standards, uh, going through, well, using the two sixty number, um, is because, um, the state requires certain, um, steps that a town takes. Uh, such as, they need to do pre-bid, um, work, and, uh, then they need to do, um, you know, several other steps, I can't think of them without the head, but there are several steps involved to which each one of those steps require money. If we end up doing some of that stuff, which we've already taken out the committee and some of the engineering design out of that two sixty, and then, um, take out, um, some of those steps that would necess, well, would be required um, for us to, um, meet the, uh, state standards to go through, say, the, the bridge aid fund, um, we would be able to reduce those funds. We're still getting the same bridge, one way or the other. Just if we go, um, the state bridge funding, which is at two sixty, um, then we would, uh, be required to go through all loopholes to make the work.
So, just to clarify, so the standards aren't in the quality of the bridge, it's other steps?
Chris?
The, excuse me, Chris Seaman. The numbers in the quotes that you've gotten so far from the Bacon Engineering, they're prints, which were available for viewing at a, at the last selectmen's meeting. Those meet DOT standards, correct?
Yes, they do.
Okay. Sorry.
The, the price that Bacon got, he used the price from the DOT.
Speak up.
The, uh, price that Bacon gave us, he got the prices from the DOT specifications, so they are state standard. And as far as being a, uh, a different bridge, uh, if you're looking to give state aid, you have to talk about the State of Manhattan regulations for a bridge. Even though this is a, a civil engineer, he's still using the DOT standards. So we're not getting that expanded bridge.
I would caution any comments from the audience or anyone here that if you have information that you're bringing forward to the people, that may scare them, that you have facts that go along with it and not opinions and hearsay, please. Because when you're talking something of this large amount of money, and something that's a public safety issue where you're going to cross it with a vehicle, that tends to scare people. Just like, no one here wants to talk bad about the fire department or the police department because they're scared of the ramifications. Have facts, don't make statements that you can't prove and scare people. As I've said before, I worked for the town of Osiphe, for the highway department. I came forward last year with my concerns over the number that I thought was elevated for a small brook on Stevens Road. Yes, it is qualified, it is called a bridge because it's over ten feet by state standard, but it's really still a small brook that we can put a culvert in and get away with. In the town of Osiphe, and I use this for an example, the Thurler Road Bridge. We spanned a twenty-seven foot wide river. We had to get easements across people's land for a temporary road. We paved a half, well, quarter of a mile section of road. The entire project cost was a hundred and forty thousand dollars. That bridge made, met all state standards and is qualified as an E-two bridge, which is over a hundred thousand pound bridge, state standard. That is factual. The Board of Selectmen had all of those numbers in front of them. We're not making this statement just willy-nilly, okay? Let's not use scare tactics. Let's try to go off the selectmen's homework, that we can do this for two hundred and ten thousand dollars, that fifty thousand dollars will mean a log in the bottom dollar. Thank you.
I have a full set of plans here from Bacon Engineering, and maybe if you lay them out and if you can come up here, just to clear up a lot of this. There are, uh, seven pages, so it'll take a few minutes to do, but you might clear up a lot of this, could do it.
I, I know Lawrence, I'm gonna caution him, and I don't know that, how many people here have built a bridge. I'm probably one of the few that have. And, uh, so, a set of plans like that, unless you know what the heck you're looking at, um, will take some time and it's gonna lead to more questions, so. This is, this is looking at, I, I understand where Lawrence is coming from, but, uh, I'm just gonna caution you, nobody's an expert in bridge, I don't know if any bridge people in here are not. That's one gentleman, good, but, yes, you wouldn't. But beyond that, you're not gonna know what you're looking at. So, he's made an offer. You wanna move this meeting along, or take time to look at plans? Maybe recess for lunch and do that. A little early, though. Okay, move the question. So, we've had a call. You wanna call the question? Okay, we'll let Paul be recognized. We have two other hands that went up, but go ahead, Paul.
I can't speak for the rest of the Budget Committee, but this did not come before the Budget Committee in a, before our public hearing for the discussion of two hundred and ten thousand. But personally, yeah, since it didn't brought to us for, before a public hearing, I would have voted for representation of the two hundred and ten thousand. And I believe there are probably several other members of the Budget Committee that would have also made that same vote. No, I would support the two hundred and a half thousand dollars here.
Okay, before we call this question, are the hands up? Okay.
Ralph Thompson. I would agree with the reduction, I think. As Tim says, he's comfortable with that. There is a question that came up, and the plans were offered before review on Monday night. And that is, have they been approved by DOT yet? So that the engineer feels comfortable enough to put his stamp on it. At this point, they're not standing.
At this time, no, we do not have a stamp, so the plans, I mean, this plan that I have here is for committee services only. But the, the engineer has to get the approval from the D E S before he can finalize the plan. If D E S come back with some, gives it back to someone with reason, then he's gotta change the plan. So, if we waited to get the, get from the D E S before he comes up with a final plan, then we'll be standing. We will have a set plan that stands by the D E S.
David Manley. I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, vote on the article as amended.
So are you calling the question, David?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to call the question, which means we will vote. You have a second on this. You have a second, sort of? So the motion's a second to call the question, which means we're gonna now vote on the article as amended. So I'm now gonna read that, again. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred and ten thousand dollars to replace the bridge on Stevens Road, further to authorize the governing body to withdraw a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the undesigned fund balance for this purpose, with the remaining sixty thousand dollars to be funded through taxation. This is a special warrant article, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those in, against? All right, the ayes have it. Article fourteen carries as amended. What, do I need to mess up? We just voted on the amended. We voted on the amended article. I just read it as amended. So I read it as amended. Discuss it, maybe I'm wrong, Henry. It's okay. I think we're done. All right. Go right ahead, Mr. Jones.
We have approved the amendment, we now have to vote on the article as amended.
We will do. Here we go. We're now gonna vote on the article as amended. Article fourteen as amended. You gotta love parliamentary procedure. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred and ten thousand dollars to replace the bridge on Stevens Road, and further to authorize the governing body to withdraw a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the undesigned fund balance for this purpose, with the remaining sixty thousand dollars to be funded through taxation. This is a special warrant article, this requires a majority of vote. All in favor of the article as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I think we put it to bed. Thank you very much. Article fifteen. Go ahead. I would certainly entertain a break. So, we have a motion on the floor to take a little bit of a recess, but we have a second. Third, so people can use the bathroom, entertain the PTO, so it is currently, for all practical purposes, we will reconvene this recess at eleven o'clock, we'll give you half an hour. Everybody okay with that? Apparently so, they're going. The deliberative process. Just get a few people settled in here and then we'll resume. It'd be helpful, if you can't hear, move to the front. It works better. Trust me. I wouldn't lie to you. Come on up. We, we will, but, you know, I can't be the police for that every moment. Yeah, but, Eric, you know what, Eric, I spend a lot of time in the back of the bus. It's more fun in the back of the bus. Come on. You took pictures of the back of the bus? Oh, yeah. Yes, yes, school memories, oh boy. Okay. Article fifteen. And what I am gonna do is, uh, uh, what the heck, I'll go down through and read every line item. I don't necessarily have to, but I, but I shall. So, Article fifteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one million, four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars for the ensuing year for general operations. This requires a majority vote. The Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend this appropriation. Executive. Executive, $87,233. Election and registration, $34,166. Financial administration, $42,442. Assessing, $22,855. Legal, $25,000. Payroll expenses, $55,500. Go ahead. Oh, $885. Did I, what did I say, Irene? Okay. Now we've got to step the glasses up another number, I guess. So, I'm going to read through that. Assessing, $22,885. Legal, $25,000. Payroll expenses, $55,500. Planning and zoning, $17,778. Municipal buildings, $67,000. Cemeteries, $2,500. Insurance fees, $105,000. Advertising and regional dues, $3,000. Public safety, $315,754. Highways and streets, $442,459. Street lighting, $7,000. Solid waste collection, $51,746. Solid waste disposal, $92,750. Solid waste cleanup, $3,000. Dog officer expenses, $500. Health agencies and hospitals, $15,884. General assistance, $17,000. Meals and wheels, $4,500. Parks and recreation, $5,000. Libraries, $6,240. Patriotic purposes, $600. Conservation commission, $3,730. Town forester, $1,000. And debt service of $1, which again brings us to the total of $1,479,668. Moved by Tim Eldredge, second by Henry Spencer. We are now ready to discuss Article 15. Not come on. Okay, good. Okay, we're not hearing or seeing any discussion on Article 15. We are now ready to vote, and I will not read all that line. Oh, we got a hand. Go on. Oh, just read out what it says. Yes, Bill?
Bill Piker. I'd like to make a motion that we amend Article 15 to increase it $5,000, which would represent an increase in the legal line up to $30,000. Because I think with the current atmosphere and the way the employees and volunteers of this town are being treated, the town may be facing lawsuits. And the town needs to have the money to defend themselves, or those individuals that are indemnified by the town or entitled to legal representation. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, the second, to amend the legal line up by $5,000 to make that $30,000. We have some discussion on that. Seeing no discussion, we are only going to vote on amending that one line. So I'm not going to change that now. All those in favor of amending the legal line up $5,000 to a total of $30,000, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
How about again? Can we do that again? Aye. You're making me do this. Okay, all those opposed? Yeah, I'm going to go with the no's. Okay, no hasn't. That doesn't, that doesn't carry. Again, any other questions or concerns on Article 15? We're going back to as originally written. That amendment failed. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,479,668 for the ensuing year for general operations. This requires a majority vote. Selectment and Budget Committee recommend this appropriation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Very good. Article 15 carries. Okay, we have a motion by Paul Bardowit, second by, let's say, Chris Siemens up there, to restrict reconsideration on Articles 14 and 15. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We have restricted reconsideration of Articles 14 and 15. We now go on to Article 16. See if the town will urge that the next president and Congress fight big-money politics and restore government of, by, and for the people by championing the We the People Agenda. Number one, ban super PACs and overturn Citizens United. Two, expose secret donors and require full transparency. Three, ban bribes from big-money lobbyists and government contractors. Four, establish small donor citizen-funded elections. Five, end gerrymandering and modernize voter registration. Six, close loopholes and enforce campaign finance laws that the New Hampshire state legislature support concrete legislation to enact the We the People Agenda. The record of the vote approving this article should be transmitted in written notice from the Selectment to the New Hampshire Congressional delegation and to Effingham state legislatures and to the President of the United States, informing of the instructions from the constituents within 30 days of the vote. This article is petitioned by Arthur Saretta and others. This requires a majority vote. Anybody want to talk about this? Arthur, where the heck are you? Yeah, go ahead. Move second? Yeah. Who's moving it? Where's, petition, are you here to move it? Well, Irene moved. You second. Irene Riordan moves up, and second. I guess now we're going to discuss this. Good one.
I'm just going to throw out there that you might want to include the Supreme Court in this because Citizens United has decided by then. I don't think the President of the Congress has that one.
Okay. Do you want to amend it to include that? Or are you just saying?
I'm just saying.
Okay, very good. Anybody else want to discuss this? Okay. I'm going to read this again. Then we're going to vote on it. You got to do it. That's the way it says in the book. Anybody, okay, we're done. Article 16. We're now going to read the article and vote on this. See if the town will urge that the next president and Congress fight big-money politics and restore government of, by, and for the people by championing the We the People Agenda. Ban super PAC, number one, ban super PACs and overturn Citizens United. Two, expose secret donors and require full transparency. Three, ban bribes from big-money lobbyists and government contractors. Four, establish small donor citizen-funded elections. Five, end gerrymandering with modernized voter registration. Six, close loopholes and enforce campaign finance laws that the New Hampshire state legislature support concrete legislation to enact the We the People Agenda. The record of the vote approving this article shall be transmitted in writing by written notice from the Selectment to the New Hampshire Congressional delegation and to Effingham state legislatures and to the President of the United States, informing them of the instructions from their constituents within 30 days of the vote. This article is petitioned by Arthur Saretta and others. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Article 16 carries. Hopefully somebody can write that up. Article 17. Now, before I read Article 17, I'm going to preface this. Number one, this article is not legally binding in any court. This is for information purposes, not my opinion. This is what it says in the books that I have to read. It's not an illegal warrant article. And even if it was, we're still required to put it on the ballot as written, or we still would like everybody to vote one way or another. So this becomes advisory to the Board of Selectment, so that you know that. Number two, even though it says a secret ballot, the only way we're going to get a secret ballot is five people are going to hand me a petition, sign, present, that are on the voters' checklist, and then this can be a secret ballot. That's the RSA. I have the RSA if you want to read it. If you want a secret ballot. Just being honest with you. Five people that are registered voters can take this and sign it and bring it back prior to me calling for a voice vote. So, odds are I probably have a few minutes before we call a voice vote. Article 17. See if the town of Effingham will vote. No confidence in the Effingham Fire Chief Randy Burbank. If the vote is affirmative, the town asks the Board of Selectment to remove him from office. If he doesn't resign, does not allow him to drive any town-owned vehicles. The vote on this article is to be conducted by secret ballot. This requires a majority vote. This article is petitioned by Jerome Smith and others. Yo, nobody's moved it first. Moved by Chris Siemens, second by Justin DeWitt. Thank you very much. Now we are prepared to discuss Article 17. Go ahead.
I moved to Effingham about a couple of years ago. In my previous life, I've had a lot of experience in public employee labor relations, both from a management side and from a union side. When I saw this article, I thought to myself how wildly inappropriate this is. This is a personnel matter. It is between the Board of Selectment and Fire Chief Burbank. We're probably violating his public employee rights now by even discussing this in an open forum. Because the only one who can choose to have a public hearing is Chief Burbank.
Betty Brown. I had a lot of things I was going to say, but where I've spoken to people outside of this place about the matter which goes beyond this day, limited on what I can say, so I choose to turn that direction to something we need that equals to what's going on. And that is, this petition has caused so much negativity and separation in this town. And there's so many people at odds and in different corners. That doesn't make a community. What makes a community is each person holding hand on hand, whether they're holding hands or not, to make this community grow. And even today, a young man named George, out of the mouth of babes. And I asked him, I says, "What do you want to be when you grow up?" He says, "A teacher." I says, "Why?" He goes, "Because they're good." And I says, "What would you do with the bad guys?" He says, "I kick them in the butt." And I says, "Why?" He says, "Consequences for their actions." Oh, okay. Then I asked him, I says, "Well, what would you do with the good guys? Reward them." Then I asked him a little later, I says, "Well, would you separate those bad guys from the good guys?" "Well, no, it might be my friend." Out of the mouth of babes. So with that, I'd like to make a suggestion. We ought to pay for park and recreation, no matter what our differences or opinions or consequences that other people have to pay for their actions. I think we ought to come together as a community at least once a year and call a potluck like you would a family gathering. So it invites people that just newly come to the town or bid farewell to those who are leaving. And that's what a true community is.
You can see why I chose this seat. So I'm walking.
Speak closer to the mic, please.
Sorry, Mike. Yeah, the way this article reads makes me a little uncomfortable, too. I mean, I don't want to take away from anybody's right to have their say on the issue, but the language is a little harsh, though. I'd like to make a motion to change the language a little here by removing the word "no" from the first sentence, replacing it with the word "full," and strike the entire second sentence from the word "if" to "vehicles." So, Article 17 to now read as follows. See if the town of Effingham will vote. Full confidence in the Effingham Fire Chief Randy Burbank. The vote on this article is to be conducted by secret ballot. This requires a majority vote. This is petitioned by Jerome Smith and others. Thank you.
We have a motion, and looks like a few seconds across the board. Pardon? Go ahead. Well, I want to be honest with you. I won the fence on that because of affirmative and negative voting. But, it's, you know what? It's a petition article, my last day. I just, and that's really what I'm hanging my hat on, because I just walk out and say, "Hell with it." No, I think, let's just kick it around. I mean, it's passionate, people are passionate about it. Let them voice their opinion and see where it goes. But just, we'll be very clear. When it comes down to the vote, what your vote really means. And I'll make sure that we know that. So, I think we just let it go. But that's my opinion. If somebody wants to challenge me on that, you know the process. Go right ahead.
David Manley. Mike, I'd like to hear from the people that petitioned this article what the reasoning is for this petition.
Do we have any papers?
Did we move in second?
Yes, yes, that was done. Teresa?
So are we discussing the amendment, then?
We are discussing the amendment.
Thank you.
Well, okay, who wants to speak? Go ahead, Justin.
Justin DeWitt, Rufus Mount Row. And so, I just wanted to say this kind of, this article kind of hits a little close to home because I was one of the fires that was kind of, I guess, called one of those cellar savers that a lot of people have heard about the fire department in Effingham. They pretty much, I believe that they need a lot more better-qualified people, more trained people. I have a lot of close family and friends that are fire department employees and said that the actions that were taken in my own personal situation were inappropriate and not, really, they weren't really fighting for us. The whole situation is another fire department completely took over. This, our department did not even prime any of their hoses to even try and help my situation. The other fire department came in and pretty much ran our fire department's trucks. And my husband and my close family and friends were the ones putting out our own fire. So I just believe that at this point, and I know there's a couple other houses in the town that have lost a lot with the volunteer fire department that we currently have, and I believe that this should definitely come into consideration.
Back to the room.
From what I can read here, it concerns the Fire Chief Randy. So why not take a few minutes and see maybe if he can explain what's happening? Because a lot of us that have not been to a lot of meetings do not know what's going on. But it seems though he should be able to say a few things in his behalf of what they're asking for here with no confidence. That's something against a fire chief. So that's what I recommend.
Hey, just in time. I'm going to comment on that as I'm hurrying. I'm going to caution, once again, that we border with this already with some issues. And I just don't want to get in a situation where we start getting with, uh... Oh, you know, we're going to go down that sorry road of somebody probably getting booted out of this meeting. So, I, you know, this is totally, if your question, Janet, is totally up to Randy, totally up to somebody else, but, you know. Go ahead, Randy's okay, then, fine. Once again, I'm going to caution this crowd to be nice.
Yes, I'd like to address your comments. Effingham was there, we ran the fire. I don't know where you get off saying that. We pulled up. The electric wires were arcing, so we could not put water on the fire for fear of electrocution. We had to wait for the stop, the wire dropped down between two trucks, and we started to fight the fire. Now, this fire was caused by whoever installed the wood stove. When the fluid went through the wall, it was not properly installed. There was not enough clearances through combustible materials.
Mr. Moderator, I don't know if the point of order or how I, with all due respect, she...
Well, you may, I'm going to jump in here, Melissa, because the thing already went the other way. Are we allowed to go the other way? And we want to bring it out of this.
And I want to bring it out of this, because we're not addressing this article. So we are getting a little off base, so I shouldn't have shut you out too, but I didn't.
Well, it's just a matter of concern.
No, I fully understand that, totally. So let's just keep it short and not get too carried away.
Totally.
Totally. Melissa, you had your hand up.
I'm, I'm sorry to shout out like that, Mr. Moderator.
It's great, it's great.
I didn't, to be honest with you, I didn't agree with the beginning of that conversation, nor do I agree with the amendment that was proposed, but it was seconded, so I'll respect that as well. I think we should just take this petition, Warren article, in its purity so that we completely understand what we're addressing when we stand up to speak. As for the article, um, I for one was taken aback by the petition, Warren article, as a citizen of Effingham. I did not see the article before it was submitted and was surprised to find, find out that it had been. After spending a lot of time talking to people who actually signed the petition to understand what their motivation was, I came to two conclusions. Either they have been directly involved with the fire service in some way, or they just signed it so their neighbors could get it on the morning.
Are we supposed to be discussing just the amendment? Or are we discussing the actual Warren?
Mr. Moderator, can we?
Well, I think, you know, unfortunately, that I, that I didn't discuss the amendment prior, I wasn't really in favor, but it's tied together. We're discussing the article, in my opinion. That can be overruled.
Is it possible we could just vote on the amendment to get that out of the way and then?
I think that's a great idea.
Thank you.
Sure. Call the question, that's it. Somebody want to call the question, or we want to?
Call the question.
Yeah, voting on the amendment.
Amendment, call the amendment.
Call the amendment.
Okay, now I may screw this up. I may not. I'm going to read this article as amended, only as amended. See if the Town of Effingham will vote full confidence in the Effingham Fire Chief Randy Burbank. The rest of this is left out. Yeah, the vote on the article is to be conducted by secret ballot. We've already addressed that. This requires a majority vote. So before we go any further, if you vote yea in this, this changes this amend, this article amended as such. If you vote no, it's defeated, we go back to the main article. So it's all be clear, because this is, uh, I probably shouldn't even allow this, but we're doing it. Okay, so all those in favor of the article as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Just amended.
Just amended.
Just amended.
All those in favor of the amendment?
Just the amended art, just the amended. It's not the article's amended, you're right. It's the amended. Those in fa, those opposed, say no.
Wait, go back, go back.
Go ahead, start, pardon, go ahead. Speak up.
We're voting on the amendment.
We're only voting on the amendment.
Redo that.
Okay, I'll redo it. Article 17, the amendment says, "To see if the Town of Effingham will vote full confidence in the Effingham Fire Chief Randy Burbank, the vote on this article is to be conducted by secret ballot. This requires a majority vote." Okay, those in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. The amendment carries.
Can you hear you?
Speak up, Janet.
I would like to make an amendment to, currently amended, the now amended article.
Well, we got the amendment, we haven't amended the article, we just got the amendment.
I hope we pass the amendment.
We got an amendment, we can do it in a minute.
I'd like to amend that amendment to take out the part that's requiring it be amended. I don't know if I can because of the petition that was out, but this is on the amendment to take out the part that needs to be done in a secret ballot.
We've addressed that. I have a petition for secret ballot, and I said that clearly upfront, that I would not accept that as a secret ballot, but I do have a petition for secret ballot. So it will be by secret ballot, when the, on the, on the main art, on the, as we read the article. And I'm not even sure if I clearly understand this amendment. Is this the entire article now?
Yeah.
That's it?
Turn it over down low.
Okay. Uh, we got, yeah, let's start with that. Well, you guys gave me a test at the end of this whole day.
Carol Fester?
Go ahead, Carol.
I just want to make sure at the end of this, because we've done 180 on the intent, that you very clearly say what a yes is for and what a no is.
And I shall.
Now, if you've got that as well, it needs to be very explicit.
Go ahead, yeah, go ahead, Melissa.
Okay, so now we're talking about the article cleanly as amended. Now we can open discussion on the article itself.
As amended.
Well, this is as amended, and what we read, these couple lines, it's gone from five lines to these two.
Okay, so we're good. No more, no more addressing amendments, we're addressing the amended article.
I think we're good there.
So I just wanted, I just wanted to understand, wanted to say that I understand some of the petitioners have, there's a lot of emotion behind this petition and their reasons for bringing it forward. I appreciate that in a, in a town as small as ours, we can gather 75 signatures to bring something forward to have a discussion. I've had a lot of conversations, I've followed fire trucks for a long time, I understand the ups and downs, every fire department has them. But what I came to realize, and what I expressed to the members of the fire department when I went there on a Wednesday night and met with them, is ultimately, everybody has a boss, including our, our appointed fire chief. I am very dismayed that complaints or concerns, I don't want to say complaints, but concerns have been brought forward previously. And then, of course, we had the fire engine that rolled over, so that brought everything to a head for some people. So when I met with the fire members, I just wanted to make sure that they knew, in my opinion, and I'll express it today, is I blame the administration of our town for leaving our fire chief out dangling by himself and his membership to defend his position, their department, and their volunteer efforts. So, um, I think I'm grateful to the petitioners for bringing this to the forefront. I hope that moving forward, the Board of Selectmen adopt and, and practice a complaint process for citizens, so when they have a complaint about the fire department or any other, I know I may be strained, I see your face.
Really?
Ultimately, the fire chief is a department head, much like other departments we have in town, and he has a boss, and it's the Board of Selectmen. There should be a process for citizens to file complaints and not feel that they have to go to this level to be heard, and those should be followed through on, and the complainant should receive some sort of follow-up to their complaint. I, in the future, I, I'm just appalled that, um, the fire chief had to defend himself, and he had to answer questions from states throughout New England and news outlets everywhere about that truck. That, this selectman should have grabbed a hold of that right from the beginning, taken charge, and changed the public perception. Thank you.
Yeah, we have a full discussion on this amendment. Go ahead. One half the point, okay.
Betty Brown. Yes, um, thank you, Ms. Seaman, for your words. And I'd also like to add that, um, Chief Randy Burbank started to say something, and whether it was her or anyone else that interrupted that, I don't think that's right or fair that he be cut off at the knees when he tried to defend himself. And I think that we ought to give him that opportunity to get up here and continue speaking up for the situation. And I'd expect, I would like to have people like, you know, say yes or clap their hands to verify the man gets a voice. I have full confidence in him.
Here. Again, I'll remind the audience that whatever Chief Burbank has to justify himself, he was sitting up there, and that is done in a non-public session. Thank you. Question's been called.
Seconded.
Question's been seconded. So I am going to read the article as amended. Go ahead, go ahead. What do I do?
Questions been called, and we vote on that.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Vote to call the question. Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, now we call the question, we're going to deal with the article and, we're all done in debate. So I am going to read this one more time, amended Article 17. "To see if the Town of Effingham will vote full confidence in the Effingham Fire Chief Randy Burbank, the vote on this article will be conducted by secret ballot. This requires a majority vote." Now, secret ballot, we have this piece of paper that authorizes a secret ballot. See what you are going to be doing. You're going to be voting, come here on the room, you're going to have to go through the checklist, you will be checked off, and to say yes or no, when you say yes, you are in support of the Effingham Fire Chief. If you vote no, that means you're not in support, or you're not in support of this amended, yeah, it's the article, it's not the chief. You're either favoring this as amended, it's amended article, or you're not. So yes means yes, and no means no. And hopefully that's clear. We all said, we all done with that? Good? Yes, we're good? Well, I mean, you have the opportunity to speak. We're not, we're not about your procedure. Okay. All right, so, Indiana, how do you want to, how do you want to run this? So if we can start around, start at the table, we'll get where the camera is, we're going to let the line go all the way around the back, and now this is going to take a few minutes. Right, so what you'll do is you will be checked into the checklist. We have a little separate table for voting, and I ask that nobody go to that table until the other person leaves, and check out Indiana on the checklist. Uh, no, we have pieces of paper. You will, you, your card, you'll be handed a separate piece of paper for this vote.
You're not there, it's down there, it's down.
Who's your, uh, full bar?
I'm slow, but it's going.
You just got tin left, or some wall stuff, right?
Yeah.
You think everybody understood? How that went?
Maybe? Okay. Well, all right, maybe you did, and let me put it this way, I should have been the one to follow through, but I was away, and everything was short notice, and I didn't have any, I didn't have a telephone, so I couldn't call when I was away, and so I never did follow through, and it just got to me, and I didn't, but maybe you did send something, I don't know. You know, I'm not, I'm not sure about that, but I don't know. I don't, I don't.
Remember yesterday?
I know, I know.
Yeah, always have. It's important, you know, so. If I'm not, I'm not.
Thank you for videotaping it, I watched the town meetings, because we can't get to them. You can watch it on the cell phone. I'm following my dog, shh, you can't hear me.
David Bass, he was on our rounds recruiting. He is Catholic, Catholic.
And building the crowns and white chicken. What should I stay away from, I know what this particular hospital person does, likes to build.
Can you make a star out of me?
Might not be in your best interest.
Where are you going to adjust my plan?
I might, I might.
It's supposed to be turned on the boat. You're supposed to be taking the boat.
Can't do the, oh, they don't want it.
How many, twice a one week, right?
And they've done it publicly, all over Facebook.
Oh, no, I'm not disagreeing with that, oh, everybody.
Well, it's hard to, because you know, if you're building houses around the other houses, you've changed that wood, put it on the natural floor. So you, it's very hard to say that that was the problem. More surface area have run off, creates a different water throughout the years of new houses going in. So, like, a home gets a lot of water, the amount of water that used to soak the ground now runs off. So it's the same idea, just on a smaller scale, so something changed here. I had six, two days, eight inches of water, because I'm trying to work it in.
You better be careful, you might be coming. Wasn't very warm water.
I don't know how you withstand that long.
You're used to it, right?
Did you get the clothes on?
Is that the same kind of camera you use for pornography? Is that the same kind of camera you can use for pornography?
I know there's restrictions on what you could use.
What's the web address? Hope you're busy between this and the elections meeting. Hope you're very busy. We, we have a friend from, we go to church at Watermelon Church, and the fellow up there says, "I see you on the, on the TV every week." He butts us in at the, I said, "No, not town meeting, we're at the selections office." Yeah, he lives way up in Topten Bowl. Jim says, "Oh, very well." He pulls out his camera. He spent fifteen minutes there, saying, explaining to us, because he goes all the way up to Madison.
Trail.
Yeah, almost a trail. He's going to make it through it, I guess.
Had an easy day today, got a chair and everything, huh?
Don't blame you.
It's like buying a Larry's thing, which you're right.
I've never been there so bad in my life.
You ever seen such bullshit?
Yeah, it makes you think that might happen.
Not mine.
Your wife did not say it for today. We're going to have a lot of people.
Yeah, people don't understand that.
We need subtitles.
Yes, what's coming out of his mouth?
There's still, there's still articles, uh, yes, 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 yes. There's still articles. Which means you get drafts and all that, and you tighten up all the. Those, those come off, okay, and these are actually accompanying the double, um, ally to have, to, you know, take off your, you know, take off your. You know, they originally had that big, open door stump, right, so they have settings, they pull back every few days, they change the settings, they change the, they change day ten, the staples, I saw many.
And you?
Yeah. No, it's the other side of that. That hustle's actually. Yeah, and basically, it's a, yeah, front exit for us. Although I've had, we have two school buses with eighty kids, a lot of people think it's the. So they think the trailhead's there, so they come down, and if you just go by. I'm not into like nasty sounds, you know, saying. The funny thing is, I went down and I told them, and it was one of these camps, it's summer camp, and the guy wouldn't, thought I was lying. So, so they tried to like get to the, to my, my. Government oversight, what is that? You see that on TV, that guy they were doing mosquito, he had a meeting, there's two guys, and there was nobody else, nobody. Now it's, big hits on the internet.
Now he's doing what he was doing before, and what the chief had to do, yeah.
So basically, someone doing all this paperwork, he gets this thing hired to.
It was a really good, he's a.
It was a really good history.
We should ask them, they should go.
I'm assuming that it's going. I'm assuming it's going if you haven't screwed up.
Doing a fine job. I just want you to know that the line is right down to almost nobody, and if you haven't had a chance to vote, please take that opportunity now. As soon as we see the line is nobody's there, we'll close the polls. Thank you. Hello? Okay, if everybody could please get back to their seats, give you a moment, and I'll give you the results of this vote. Okay, welcome back. The results for Article Seventeen. One hundred and one in the affirmative, thirty-four in the negative. Article Seventeen has amended carries. Article Eighteen. To see if the town will vote to accept the reports of its agents and auditors. Motion by Tim Eldridge, second by Henry Spencer, any discussion on accepting reports of agents and auditors? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Eighteen, to see if the town report, will, town will vote to accept the reports of its agents and articles, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes carried, Article Eighteen carries. Article Nineteen, to transact any other business that may legally come before said meeting. At this point, I'm gonna turn this over to Henry Spencer, and a few folks, go ahead. Oh, move it, yeah, okay, sorry. I'm trying to get out of here. Second, okay, so we moved to second to transact any of the business, so if anybody else has any input or anything, I'd ask you to come to the microphone and speak, but right now, we give the floor to Henry.
Well, I want to thank everybody for coming, and this is the largest turnout I've seen in a long time, it makes me feel very, very good. I just wanted to thank Tim, I have both watched and worked for Tim Eldridge's Selectment of Evanham. And as I see it, he has always had one plan, to offer his time and mind in tribute to the people of Evanham. Tim Eldridge is a good man, I would like those who know Tim to stand and say thank you very much. My hearing speech about Tim is a little bit shorter, um, here's my half, which... Thank you, um, and I, sometimes I'm unaware of board members to change and stuff, and so if there were any other chairmen's or boards or board members that would like to be thanked, another board or board member for their service, please come on in.
Eric Jones, I currently serve on the Historic District Commission, and wanted to bring to the attention of the townspeople that one of our members will be stepping down this year. This person joined the commission when it was formed in nineteen eighty-seven, and has served continuously since that time for a stretch of twenty-nine years. So at this time, I would like everyone to stand and give a round of applause, which will noted embarrassingly, to Mr. Paul Potter.
As long as you do it while you're working on electrical at my house, that's fine.
Ben Paul.
Under this, I would like to make a motion to see if the town will vote to give a full, a vote of full confidence to all town employees, and to give them a commendation of a job well done, and what helped the townspeople.
Amen! I think that is a motion to second, all those in favor, any discussion, anything, just say aye. Okay, well done.
Betty Brown, I'd like to recognize the chief and staff, the police department, and everybody who keeps us safe and protected, and I'd just like to have a nice round of applause for them.
Anybody else have anything to offer, or, I mean, Paul?
I don't think I need the microphone. As you've noticed on the town report, there is a dearth of people running for office, and there are a bunch of openings in town, which can be appointed by the selectmen, or just by going up and filling the positions. I'm thinking we need members on the zoning board, alternates on the zoning, alternates on the planning, alternates on the historic district, and a bunch of other boards that are not even gonna be mentioned. I would ask any of you who are civic-minded, and who want to find out a little bit about the intricate clockwork working for the town, to see the selectmen, and try to fill some of these openings, because it's very hard to run a meeting legally when you don't have a forum, so come on up and go and see. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to add to this? Okay, uh, the back.
And I would like to thank the town moderator for your great service.
Very humbling. Chief, chief would like to speak for him.
Yeah, Randy Burbank, I'd like to thank everybody for their thoughts and prayers and support after my accident, that's what it was, was an accident, and I'd like to thank everybody who supported me here today. Thank you.
Okay, so I get to have the last word, which is kinda cool. I, I, I tell you that this is only my third town meeting, and I've done three or four elections, and everybody in this town is so supportive, just by your kindness here that you just showed me. We had a hundred and thirty-five people vote, and my thirty-five plus or minus years of being at town meetings is the most people we've ever had. We couldn't squeeze you all into the old library building, in fact, we didn't have that many people in town to do it at that time. So that's a good thing. So this just shows that, you know, no matter what you do, this, this town meeting opportunity we have here in the New England States, particularly right here in New Hampshire, gives us all an opportunity to come in, voice our opinion, hopefully go out and still as friends, hopefully arrive as friends. But this is true form of government, grassroots, there's nowhere else in the country that people get the opportunity to do this. This, this is looked at as an enigma around the world, not only without First the Nation primary, but this very legislative body that is here today. You all have the right to decide the future of your town, and that's, that's a big privilege. So I'd like to thank everybody for coming, and I want to remind that any of the people that ran for office that are newly elected, please come up afterwards and be signed in. And in closing, I will take a motion to adjourn this meeting. So we have a motion adjourned, motion seconded, Godspeed, and thank you very much. We are done.